Good evening and welcome to the Norwood School Committee meeting of Wednesday, January 27th, 2021. First order of business tonight is approval of minutes. And in our packet, we do have three sets of minutes, business meeting minutes from January 13th, executive session minutes from January 13th, and then also the minutes from the Joint Public Forum School Committee meeting on the Middle School Project from January 14th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Emory. Is there a second?
A second.
Thanks, Dave. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
You. Dr. Thompson, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, moving right along. Dave, could I have you share with us the warrants that you signed for us?
Yep. I signed warrants on behalf of the school committee, amounts of $14,099, $19,033.62, $10,907.35 for a grand total of $684,531.75.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions from the committee on those warrants? Okay, moving right along to public forum at 7:13. So I will announce the public forum open as we have been doing for the last 10 months. The way to access public forum is through the email address npsschoolcommittee@norwood.k12 MA US. I'm going to check that email address. I know we've had two public forum emails that came in earlier. The first one came in on Saturday, the 23rd, and this is from Bonnie Dune. And she writes, Dear Norwood School Committee, Governor Baker has recommended that schools bring back students to full time in person as much as possible. I understand that Superintendent Thompson has said that this is not possible due to ventilation and/or spacing even at three feet. Is there a plan to bring back the youngest students up to grade one or two to full in person this year? I understand nearby towns are making plans to return at least the youngest students. I understand that the town has several elementary schools with different enrollment numbers. However, my son's first grade classroom has six students attending in the blue cohort and about six to seven from my understanding in the gold cohort. I would think the classroom could handle 12 students full time if participation remained the same. Under what circumstances would you consider bringing back students full time? Teachers are currently eligible to be vaccinated starting in February. Will the town make plans to return students after the teachers have had the opportunity to be vaccinated? Thank you for your time, Bonnie Dune. And then another email came in earlier today, actually also from Bonnie, and this one is titled, Public Forum Part Two. So she wrote to us today, in addition to Governor Baker's and the American Academy of Pediatrics urging of schools to reopen, the CDC citing their recent JAMA article has also stated that it is safe to reopen schools with mitigation measures. Norwood has stated that the issue is spacing and ventilation on why children cannot be brought back full time. Can you clarify which schools have these issues? Is it one or many? High school, middle school, elementaries, the Willet? Is there a way to enable schools that have these issues to reopen full time or to prioritize resources to allow younger elementary students to attend full time? Thank you for your information. Just refreshing that email address to see if anything else has come in while I was reading those. And I don't see any. So at this time, 7:16, I will declare a public forum closed. We don't generally engage with public forum, but I do just want to quickly state in case Ms. Dune and others are watching that in a few moments, we will have a presentation from Segal Reese and an update from Dr. Thompson on many of the issues that were just raised. So at this time, moving along to appearances, we do have Ms. Seal with us tonight from Impact Norwood to give us an update on a number of exciting initiatives that Impact Norwood and Minds Matter are in progress of rolling out. Awesome. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me. Good evening, everybody. So I will be quick because I know you have quite cumbersome agenda. So I'll first just share some quick updates on the Interface Mental Health Referral Service. We received an updated usage report for June 1st through November 30th of 2020. And of the 34 people served during this period, 11 were for children ages six through 12, and 10 were for teenagers ages 13 to 17, showing us that the majority of people served through this program during that time period were for youth. Of the total calls made to the referral service, so this includes everybody, including adults, 19 were for anxiety, eight were for depression, and eight were for family-related issues. And with those numbers, it's safe to assume that of those 19 calls seeking care for anxiety, at least six were in that age range of six to 17. And I'll just add for anybody watching, Interface is a free service that residents of Norwood can use to get connected to non-emergency outpatient mental health care services. So it's not to be used if you're in a mental health crisis. And they can be reached at 888-244-6843, Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Does anybody have any questions on the Interface report before I move on? Nope. Okay, awesome. I'll move on. I also just want to update you on an initiative that the Minds Matter arm of Impact Norwood is starting on February 1st, so this coming Monday. Mental health has always been an important area of focus for us, but I fear that because of the pandemic, it's only gotten worse and may continue to get worse. So to gauge where the community is at in terms of their mental health behaviors, beliefs, and attitudes, we're launching a quick survey, yes, another survey, to gather information from residents on what their mental health needs are. And this will allow us to work on programming for residents that will meet the needs of people in the community and hopefully prevent a serious mental health crisis from occurring. As I said, the survey is going live this coming Monday, and it's available in English, Albanian, Haitian Creole, Spanish, and Portuguese. And anybody who completes the survey, so start to finish, will have the chance to enter a raffle to win a $50 spot gift card. So they'll be able to use that in the brand new spot building. The survey is going to be available on the Impact Norwood website starting Monday, but it will also be disseminated through a number of channels, including our Facebook page, school newsletters, et cetera. So please be on the lookout for that. Any questions on that before I go into my last piece? All right, I'll move on. So lastly, for the past month, I've been working on a mental health awareness training grant application from the Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration that would provide the town with $125,000 a year for five years to do mental health awareness training. And in the application, we are proposing that we would work over that five-year period to get all teachers in the district trained in mental health first aid, which is the equivalent to CPR when you're dealing with mental health. And we are also proposing that we would implement a behavioral health screening program for youth entering new schools in Norwood. And it would also allow us to get school nurses trained to be mental health first aid trainers. And that would allow us sustainability, once the grant ends, to continue to train teachers and school staff in mental health first aid. And our ultimate goal in doing this is just to make mental health first aid as common as CPR training and get people to recognize that mental health is just as important as physical health. And it will just allow more opportunities for people in the community to potentially be referred to treatment. So those are my updates for the evening. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Aubrey. I would just point out to the school committee that in our packet, there is a letter of commitment that Aubrey has asked Dr. Thompson and I to sign for her to be able to submit with the grant, just to show our collaboration and agreement with the initiative that she just described. As always, I don't like to sign anything as Chair of the committee unless everybody on the committee agrees. Is there a motion from the committee that we can sign this letter of commitment?
So moved.
Thank you, Emory.
I'll second.
Think you might have any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Aubrey, I just want to acknowledge the amazing work that you really are doing in partnership with our schools. I know over the last couple of months, you have brought in additional supports and presentations at the high school and the middle school level for both our staff and our students. So I just wanted to make sure that the committee and the community knew about that, and so thank you for it.
Thank you. My pleasure.
And before you jump off, one more question, budget-related, which is not our favorite topic to talk about sometimes. But in our current budget, we had allocated as a district, I believe, $6,000 to help fund the interface service that Aubrey was referencing. And I believe that due to COVID funding, there was a grant that actually was able to fully fund the interface this year. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so the $6,000 that we had in our budget did not need to go to that. But the Health Department is requesting that as we budget for next year, we do keep that $6,000 in our budget for next year because we do have to re-sign the contract with Williams James College. Is that accurate?
Yes. Segal, you can jump in if I'm incorrect, but that's my understanding.
Yes, you guys got that all correct. And there's another $7,000 budgeted on the town side to assist the partnership to pay for that contract together.
And it's a two-year contract, right? That, I know we're coming out of a two-year contract. Is it another two-year contract that we would be signing?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any questions from the committee on that contract or continuing our town and school partnership with Interface? Okay. Well, thank you, Aubrey. You're welcome to join us, but you don't have to stay if you don't want to.
I'll probably go watch it on NCM now. All right, have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Segal, don't you leave though, because you're up next. So Segal is here, as has been our practice now for quite a while, to give us the next round of the health update due to the pandemic.
Just before we get into it, I, you know, I hope Aubrey's still watching because I wanted to thank her. The grant that she's applying for is a huge undertaking, and I know mental health has been a priority of this committee and also of us on the town side, too, to be able to bring mental health resources to the community. So it's a huge undertaking, very competitive, but we're optimistic that we're able to get this grant. So I thank her for doing all that work on it.
Yeah.
I'll pull up my presentation. Okay. Is there an echo?
No, I don't hear an echo.
Okay, I'm only hearing my own echo. That's all distracting. But I will go right into the data, and then at the end, like we usually do, I want a couple talking points of some updates and changes that are happening. So this week's report, which again will come out Thursday night and will encompass the 10th through the 23rd, we did see another increase in our two-week case count. It went up to 319. It was about 306 last week. So again, just a small increase. But as you can see, we've really been increasing since November, where we had that drastic climb. And then it's been slightly increasing each week. We had two weeks where we went down a little, but overall, it's a trend of obviously numbers going up on the week-to-week report. And when the numbers go up, obviously, the average daily case count per 100,000 also increases. And you can see the trend that that's been going up in the same. Our percent positive has been a little flatter, which is good, which means our testing rate is keeping up with the increase in cases. So we're seeing more cases, but still testing at the same rate. So that's a good sign. Slight increase this week, but I'd call that pretty flat from 6.6 to 6.8. I would say our average age, every time I go to update the report each week and put in the average age, it's constantly decreasing, which is a good thing because we know the highest populations are the older age brackets. So I actually brought it down. It was 41, I think, last time we talked, and now to, you know, 40 and a half. But each week, it comes down a little. But we are seeing a large range in ages from 10 months to 90 in this two-week report, and that's pretty consistent. We're seeing young children, but also on the other end of the spectrum of ages. But you can see from the chart, there's very few cases in those older age brackets, which again is a good thing because we know the risk at those age brackets. 14% of the cases were school-aged children. That's just a number taken by age. Doesn't mean all those 14% were in Norwood schools. In the schools, they were in the same two-week period, 38 students and staff cases. Any questions on the data? I like Aubrey's thing where we stop before I go on to the next thing. The idea of any questions on the data before we go into sort of the updates.
I have one question, Segal, and you might not have the answer right now. That's okay. But the 14% of cases, school-aged kids, and maybe you just said, and I missed it, how does that compare to the last report? Like, is that, that's increasing, right? That the percentage of the total cases of youth is going up?
And I think, yeah, as we see these numbers, they used to be lower. Yeah, I would say there's a few more cases here. But I would say it's increasing with the increase in cases. I wouldn't say the percent is increasing now. It ranges from, like, this is 14%. 15% to 20% has usually been the range of our cases. And that age population is about 20% of our population. So it's not like we're seeing an exorbitant percentage of school-aged children in our case numbers. Definitely not.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
So here's all the new information. And Dr. Thompson and I are going to work together on some of these some of these topics. So I know last time we were together, we talked about the pool testing program. And Dr. Thompson has some more information, but I can sort of talk about the impacts on a risk level in the schools of a testing program and the nature of exposure that we're actually seeing in the schools. But why don't I, Dr. Thompson, why don't I have you start to introduce the topic?
Yeah, so the pool, the pool testing is the, well, for the first six weeks, would be a state-sponsored testing where you basically take groups of people and run their tests all together. So you run one COVID test for 10 people, so it's less expensive. The state is going to or has already worked on and for the most part finished negotiating a contract for that going forward. They would fund it till about the end of March while we worked it in. So we were looking at originally trying to maybe do a school or two to try it out. There was another pool testing seminar on Friday, Monday, I don't even know what day it was, but a few days ago. And at that point, I was kind of blown away because it was made very clear. We are, our health staff are out straight right now. We do not have the capacity to organize, run, run the test. We just don't have the people. So originally, I was thinking, okay, well, we would, you know, contract with these vendors and have their people come in and do this for us. It was made pretty clear that the state was not overly interested in doing that. They quoted a price of $100 an hour per person to do this. And that wouldn't even help with. The other thing that was that, you know, they can give you the forms and some, and some model letters, but there would be a whole lot of work on the ground to set up. The other piece is that we would have to go through a bin max, bin, help me out here, bin now, bin.
Bin next now.
That's it, bin next now, testing protocol and get into that and apply for acceptance of that because that is a test that is in there that was not made clear a week ago. The amount of work involved with that would be astronomical. And, you know, I have to, I have to say that our school nurses are going way above and beyond. They are working extra hours every day. They are working on things that are not in their normal scope of what they do. And I do, I just do not have, you know, the personnel to set up to run. So then the other thing that came up in this was, okay, so you have a pool and a pool test positive, that whole group is then excluded from school and activities until we would be able to prove who was positive and who was negative. So that can kind of be disruptive. So you have a classroom, the classroom, let's say, 25 third graders test positive, you send them all home, have people come and pick them up, and then they don't come back until you can retest all of those people individually. That seems a little disruptive to what we do. So, you know, so, you know, I think I quoted you the cost to do the whole district at $5 a swab is about $25,000 a week. You start adding in the fees to get started up, the staffing we would need at $100 an hour, we're easily getting close to $30,000 a week. So when I look at that cost, look at the disruption that was necessary that could be caused. Look at the time because we've got our kids in a hybrid, so we're going to do it in each school twice. You know, they're in person for two days. They're going to have to line up and have these tests done or interrupt with, you know, their regular learning time to do that. It just, it just seemed, you know, expensive. We're talking about a once-a-week test. Is that really enough testing and enough individual testing to really, you know, sift out the positive cases in that timeframe? And my concern is the time spent doing this is time spent away from what we are doing now, which has kept our transmission down, has kept our cases down, and, you know, is working. I mean, we've had, we've had one, possibly two transmissions, you know, either in our schools or what have you, one student to staff and possibly one student to student, although there's some suspicion that that may have been, they may have been in another activity together and, you know, it was a little stepped differently. But let's, for, you know, for argument's sake, say two out of, you know, what, six, six months, 13,500 kids, 400 kids in there, plus 400, 500 staff, that's, that's pretty darn good. You know, a piece of that is the cooperation we've gotten from the community, the help from the Health Department, but being quickly able to move people into a quarantine to ensure that we're not getting a lot of close contacts, a lot of prolonged exposure. And that's the thing, at this point in time, the cases we're seeing are coming from, they're contracting it at home. We're finding it at school, but it's not getting passed in school. My concern is if we are going to not only spend the money, but the time plus the disruption on this is that we would take time away from what is actually working very well. So, I don't know, Segal, do you want to?
Yeah, so if I sort of take the, the public health standpoint on that, you know, what we always talk about, the risk benefit analysis, there's not much new information we get from the pool testing. Like Dr. Thompson said, we know our exposures are actually happening outside of the school. So the impact on the risk level is actually going to be pretty low. It's not going to really move the dial that much to be able to test everybody once a week. The test is a snapshot in time. We know that. So you could test negative, go out, be exposed the next day, and then a couple days later, you're transmitting before you even get that second test the next week. So it's good if you're seeing a lot of transmission and a lot of activity, because then you'd want to know what was going on, and you could target your testing like that. But where we clearly have evidence that there's not a lot of in-school transmission, I just, for the amount of time, effort, and cost that it would take to run this program, I just don't think it's, it's worth it. It wouldn't give us that much new information, and it wouldn't reduce our risk levels that much more. I think focusing on the mitigation strategies that we are doing and the effort of contact tracing are much more effective and have a bigger impact on our risk level. And, you know, enforcing that, the social distancing and the mask wearing, those are where you're going to get, you know, they're not exciting, they're not fun testing programs that, you know, bring interesting data, but those are the effective strategies to reduce transmission of this virus.
Are there any questions from the committee for Dr. Thompson and Ms. Reese on the decision to not move forward with the pool testing? Okay. Do you want to continue with the updated items?
Sure. Are we going, do you want me to start on athletics or?
Take it away.
There you go. All right. So athletics, I'm not sure the community knows, but since last, last week ago from Friday, we had five teams had to be quarantined, shut down. Three, four of them were this past weekend. Basically, and it's kind of, you know, for, you know, I don't want to make a joke of it, but it kind of is ironic that, you know, in, in those few days, we had, you know, five or six cases, five of which were five individuals who were singly on five different teams. I joked with Dr. Galligan as we were discussing this Saturday afternoon, that couldn't we get a couple bookworms in this group of, group of six? But, but that is kind of what happened. That's, that's a, you know, it's five, and these exposures, these, these positive cases came, came from homes. But they're, you know, they're in some cases, you know, they're in the quote-unquote high-risk sports, you know, they're in with other players. We had to, we had to pivot four teams, starting on Friday through Sunday, Sunday night, Monday morning, four teams to quarantine, which basically is paused their season. So we put them in the quarantine protocol. They are, you know, can get tested and come back. It's just, I mean, it's not, you know, the overall cases in the high school at that point were low last week until, but those cases kind of hit, hit hard, if you will. So that's, that's kind of where we were. We did shut down athletics Saturday afternoon, evening. The boys varsity hockey game was already in progress, so obviously weren't going to pull them off of the ice. But we did stop all other activities through Tuesday. And the reason for that is much like the times we've had to pivot classrooms to remote, is simply having enough, enough personnel to actually do the contact tracing and notify the proper people about, you know, about, you know, these cases that have to quarantine. And also, we also kind of, you know, it was, it was one particular grade level that this was for the most part. We wanted to make sure there weren't going to be other ones popping up, and that would be one less day we might have to quarantine those other kids. So that's kind of where we are with athletics.
And I would just add that the, I think that the big difference with athletics, right, is the, is particularly with the higher-risk sports, is the level of exposure. So we might have a case in a classroom, if they do even expose somebody, if they're even in school during their infectious period, they're exposing very little to know other people because of the mitigation measures we're taking. The problem with athletics is that the exposure, the number of people in quarantine is huge, and it's a very big undertaking when you have to contact every single person on the team. But in the same respect, not a lot of the team members are converting. So there's a lot of exposure, but there's not a lot of transmission. There is transmission. There has been some transmission on the sports teams, but it's not, it's not huge. So I think that it's the work in contact tracing, not, it's not the fact that it's adding to our case number that much. I think that's the, that's the work with, that's the issue with the athletics. It's the, the effort that, and we've transferred that over to the school nurses, and they've been doing a good job. But that's one of the things that we've transferred over from, from the Health Department to the school nurses to do. So it's, it's that work, I think, that has a big impact on the department.
Segal, I'm going to ask you a question, and then I know Joan has a question or a comment as well. The transmission on the sports teams that you just referenced, I know we came together over the December break because there was transmission, and we addressed it then. Has there been other cases of athletic transmission, transmission since then?
Looking at Dr. Thompson, where we've given it to the school nurses, I don't know that update. No.
No, no, there is not. You know, and in fact, the first team that was quarantined has come back, and those athletes' test results have been negative.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to confirm. But Joan, you had a question?
That, that was my question, was whether or not there had been, Dr. Thompson earlier had said there had been one, maybe two cases of in-school transmission, and then Segal had said there had been potential transmission on teams. So I guess I just want to be clear.
Yeah.
Do you consider team-based transition, transmission to be in-school transmission? I think we need to get our terms all clarified there.
Yeah, I would. I mean, I'm counting on the same. We're having people in our care transmitting from one to the other, whether it's, you know, on a basketball court and ice hockey sheet of ice or in a classroom. So thus far, we've had Ice hockey sheet of ice or in a classroom. So thus far, we've had one in-classroom. Transmission and we've had one uh sport team transmission, but that actually would have been. Arguably, just as or just before the season started.
And then we've had, there was one that you mentioned earlier. That was a potential, right? Like, it, it, my understanding is that. The students were in the same class, but they, you had said that there might be something happening that they might have been together on a team outside of it. Is that the same one?
Yes, that's the.
That's the same one as the team one. Okay, all right, got it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry, that's why I was like that. We're all using terms.
Trust me, I, I, yeah, no, I, I, I have, uh, we, we, we've gone to uh me receiving, I have, I have to call. Um, our cases in to the, to the Department of Education every, every day. Sometimes by the time I get to it, they've closed. Sometimes, sometimes they get two days in a row. Today, they're going to get, uh, tomorrow, they're going to get two days in a row. Uh, but I've gone to have you to ask for initials to try to make sure I'm not doubling. Um, who, who the cases are because they keep popping up. Same reason, the, there's enough coming down the road that it's uh, it can get confusing at times.
But Thompson, could you just um, share with the committee, um, how much more of the winter season is left?
There is this week and next week of the official winter season. Uh, there is one week where some of these paused games might be able to be made up. And I say might be able to, because it depends on where other uh teams are with that. Um, so we are, we are close to the end of the, of, of the winter season and then. We have, I think a week after that, or two weeks after that, Fall Two starts. Fall Two include, they are more outdoor sports is football. Um, cheerleading, volleyball, and one other that I'm forgetting. Please don't, don't, don't beat me up. I'm, I'm tired. But there's, but there's one more, one more in there.
Your track?
Yes, yeah. Thank you. Rescue me. Yeah.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee on athletics at this time? Okay, um, anything else, um, Sigal, that you wanted to add from your perspective on athletics?
No, Melissa, thank you.
Okay, so moving along to vaccine, uh, which I know has been in the news a lot lately.
Yes, well, um, on Monday, the phase two uh of the vaccine plan will open. So that means individuals seventy-five and older will qualify, will be eligible to receive vaccine. Um, at the same time, we are um, dealing with a, definitely a supply issue. Um, we have a large capacity to vaccinate in Massachusetts and it's double to triple the supply that we're receiving. So huge capacity to vaccinate, plenty of places and people are ready to vaccinate, including us. But just not enough vaccine coming into the state. Um, the state is not sitting on vaccine. They receive an allocation from the federal government and um. Process all those different vaccination centers across the state and then distribute those allocations and they ship directly from the manufacturer to us. Along with supplies actually too. So what they have done is they indicated to us that they were only shipped to us a hundred doses a week, probably through February. Um, so as you can imagine, um, we still have people in phase one that are waiting for vaccine and now we have thousands of people coming on with phase two with the seventy-five and older. Um, and with that also, and then to sort of add to it, they also changed the order of phase two. They brought up the bullet point, and I hope you guys can see it. I know it's a little small, but um, they brought up the bullet point of individuals sixty-five and older. Individuals with two corumidities up to the second bullet point. So again, those bullets are actually in order that they will open up. So right now, only the first bullet is open. What that did was that actually moved educators down to the third bullet. So we were hoping February, March to start doing teachers. So bad news is it's probably more like March, April. And if we do get there, um, if they do open it up, uh, it's going to be, I think there's still going to be restrictions on supply. So what we were hoping to do was to vaccinate everybody within a week. Um, and I just don't know if we're going to have the doses to do that. So we've been having some conversations, um, and I believe we're also meeting again tomorrow. Um, to reevaluate our vaccine plan. And this is, this is the pandemic. This is what we've been doing the whole time. We come up with a plan and then something changes and we have to adapt. So at least we're getting used to adapting. Um, but, you know, it's, it's. Good news and bad news, depending how you look at it, that, um, you know, the people at highest risk of getting ill from this disease will get the vaccine first in the priority. And I, I do want to say, um, the, sort of how the phase plan, why the phase plan is the way it is. It, it takes into account um, risk level and um, and equity. So those most affected by the illness will get the vaccine first. And I think a lot of people interpret it as. Who's the most essential should get it first, but it's really more of your risk of exposure. Um, not, you know, not so much your, how your sensual are to society. I think we're more talking about how um, the level of risk of your exposure. Um, and then we know, like we, we always talk about that the older populations are at higher risk of more severe disease. So I think that's why the change was made. Um, everything is a, is an appointment-based system and I put the website there that there's a searchable map. That indicates all the clinics that are uh available for residents that qualify to get vaccinated. Um, but just reminding everybody that it's going to be a slow process and it might take weeks to months to get an appointment. And that just pushes everything out further.
Thank you, Sigal. Um, are there questions, comments from the committee on the vaccines? Maif?
Um, if we're looking at um, March to April, I think is what you said to, or maybe it was April. Starting April to, to vaccinate educators. Um, you're not immune the day that you get the um, injection. So, so how long does it take to um, until the vaccine is fully effective?
So it's with the Moderna vaccine that we're using now, um, it's a two-dose regimen, um, twenty-eight days apart. So let's say you get it. Um, you know, March, you're really getting your second dose beginning of April, your immunity, your full immunity will probably be two weeks after that to mid-April. Um, don't ever pin me down to a date when that's going to happen. Um, I'd say March, April, because that's what the current plan says. Um, like everything is fluid.
Right, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, if we start vaccines, vaccinations for, for school staff in March, April. They wouldn't be immune till like April, May, even pushing into June.
Right, and it all depends on supply. So by the time we get all staff. That want it vaccinated, um, if the supply remains restricted like this, it'll take much longer, obviously.
Are there questions or comments on the vaccines? Maif?
If we're done with vaccine, I did have a question about contact tracing, but I don't want to cut off the vaccine conversation.
Was there anything additional, Dr. Thompson, that you want to add about vaccines?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll probably come back to it in my super tense report.
Uh, yesterday, I um, tried to watch the, the Bessie, the Board of Elementary. Um, education, uh, board meeting, but they were having a lot of uh audio issues during it, but I, I tried to watch it. Um, but I was a little upset and dismayed with Commissioner Riley and the board. Because not once in the four-hour meeting, um, did they even bring up this topic. And I just think it's, again, really irresponsible of how the state navigates these challenging conversations. But that's all I want to comment. So, Maif, have your question on contact tracing?
So on contact tracing, um, I know that when we have had a situation where a student is in um. School during, in a, in a classroom during an infectious period, then um. The, we have sent out notices to that classroom and, and we generally, a lot of times the notice says like, you know. The contact tracing is complete, and so if you have not been directly contacted, then you are not a close contact. Uh, but I think, I believe from what I'm hearing, that the process is working a little bit differently. For um, the athletic exposures. And that's fine. I don't, I just wanted, um, I was hoping that either Dr. Thompson or Ms. Reese could. Talk about what families should expect if they, uh, if their student athlete is exposed on a, um. On an athletic team, how that contact will happen, who should be contacting them, that. What, what is our system right now? And is that going to the state um, contact tracing?
Well, I, I can jump in on the, the CTC, the Community Tracing Collaborative, which is the state contact tracing. So every, every positive case comes through our, the Maven online reporting system. And is either picked up, now we're talking about community cases, any, any case in the community that's positive. Um, comes through our system and at this point, most of ninety-nine percent of them are going to the CTC. So they do get traced um, from them. But then there's sort of also, and I'll let Dr. Thompson answer, the activities that happen within the school.
Right, so, so we are moving especially the athletic teams over, you know. Giving that to the CTC because it's becoming, you know, a large number of, of people to contact and that sort of thing. So the plan is, is that there will be a notification given to the team. Uh, depending on what that is, they either might be the nurse or that might be the athletic director, just to give people a heads up. And again, the, you know, the priority is, is to start the quarantine process right away. We don't want to have any other. Exposure go- going on if that's, um, you know, if that's the case. So, um. Then, you know, then that goes to the CTC and the CTC will be notifying um, the parents. Um, what, there was a large volume this past weekend. Um, and I did discover this afternoon that there were uh, some issues with. Results from the primary cases getting into the Maven system. Again, that's. A weekend thing and that can, that can slow things down. We've been lucky. Uh, in that we have moved on, uh, people have taken screenshots of their test results. Uh, and we've been able to move on that in the past because that is faster seemingly, especially right now than, than waiting for the, for the Maven. Um, number, I know uh, in one of the sports teams as of Monday, that information was not in Maven. I do not believe it was there Tuesday. Um, so that has slowed down the CTC response, near as I can tell.
And I can just explain, so the actual labs that test report to the state. Um, some do it electronically, some actually still do it by fax. Um, because that's a secure medical way to transmit information. Um, and then that gets inputted into the database and then it shows up as one of Norwood's counts. Um, but, so that, that process can take a delay. And then it sits in Norwood's counts for, um. Actually, now they do it twice a day until they do a, a data dump into the CTC system. So it does create a little bit more of a delay than if we picked up the case here. But I think the bigger delay is, is what Dr. Thompson's saying, is the lab reporting up to the state and the state inputting it into the Maven system. So it actually comes up as a case on the record for Norwood and then gets sent to the CTC. So. That whole process can take a couple of days.
Right.
Okay, so, um, just and the, so if it's, I, I understand the Maven link thing is completely out of our hands. I just want to understand what happens when we have a case where a student or a family basically self-reports to. The schools saying, you know, this child has tested positive and then we learned that that child was, you know, in the um. Infectious, during their infectious period during an, an athletic practice or a con, you know, a game. Um, who determines who the close contacts are and, and who determines who should quarantine?
With many of the high-risk sports, it's an automatic trigger, like hockey. If there's an individual that's infectious on a hockey team, the, um, the way the guidelines are reading is the hockey team is automatically all quarantined. We don't take that evaluation like we do in the classrooms, you know, fifteen-minute conversation within six feet. And I think that's the same with all the high-risk sports. It's an automatic.
Right. Yeah. Um, I think we have, yeah, Jill, Jill Driscoll is with us. Jill, do you want to see if you can add to this conversation?
So I, I can just share that, um, the coaches have been really great about, um. In addition to parents, um, people have been really great about sharing and, um. So when we're notified, um, if it's over the weekend, which sometimes it is with games. Um, the school nurses pick up the slack a little bit. And um, we'll call families, um, or have the coach sometimes chooses to do it. And just say that, um, you know, we're unable to complete the contact tracing right now. And so out of an abundance of caution, we're asking your child to remain remote for tomorrow. Until we can sort of follow through with it. Um, I think it's, then, it's a little labor-intensive, but I think it is working well. And, and kids are, for the most part, being safe and, um, it's. It's kind of, we're, we're still tweaking the system. The CTC is, is something we're learning because. Um, it's a, it's a huge resource for us. It decreases the number of calls that the school nurses actually have to make. It makes it a little more uniform, but it's a transitional thing and, and we're still learning and. But I think we're trying really hard to at least, um. Let families know that they've been exposed so that they can make best choices for their families. And that we keep students home until we're certain that it's safe for them to be back at school.
Right. So we are, yeah, thank you, Jill. We are, we are definitely being, acting quickly. And in, in, in a abundance of, of caution in all areas, really. I mean, if there's any doubt. You know, we're, we're, we're lucky and that we have a pretty robust uh, remote learning system. Um, but it's, you know, important to make sure we're not. You know, I mean, you don't want to wait two or three days for, you know, it to get into the Maven system and then into CTC. So we are, we are notifying uh, as soon as we become aware.
Yeah, we, we've talked a lot earlier in the past couple of months about, you know, when are there such delays that contact tracing is no longer an effective tool? Um, and, you know, nationwide, we've probably been there for quite a while. Statewide, I think most towns have already been there. I think in Norwood, um, we've been doing this better than most. Between Sigal's leadership and the collaborations we talked about be- before, between the school nurses and the Department of Health. Um, and, you know, the point of now needing to rely more on the CTC, most towns have been there. Most towns started there. Um, so I, I, I just want to acknowledge that and, and, and thank Jill and her team and thanks to all and her team yet again for all that you're doing. Um, but any, any thoughts, um, from anybody really on like, you know, the challenges that we're now seeing more and more with the contact tracing? And, and knowing that our public health nurses need to be focused on vaccination and our school nurses are focused on a lot of things and. Um, you know, Sigal, not to put you on the spot, but, you know, one of the questions we talked about before is. What's that threshold? I don't think we're there yet, but are you starting to get more concerned that we're getting closer?
Well, I think, I, I think your nurses, the school nurses have been doing a great job. And I think what it makes it a little better with the schools is that you can really enforce it. Um, so even if, um, you know, you might be a few days behind, you can, you know, clearly not let those people into the building. Um, community contact tracing is a lot more difficult because we don't have that enforcement arm. We're really relying on people to do the right thing. Um, you know, it's not perfect and it's not perfect when it comes to school cases either. Um, but to your point, you know, is it, is it still effective? I think it still is. Um, when we talked earlier about sort of what affects that risk level, I think tracing is still one of those tools that we can have to reduce that risk and, and has an impact.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to hear that answer.
And I mean, I, I would, you know, and Jill is really the one running the show now there, so I, I. Wonder what she thinks. I don't want to put you on the spot, Jill, but you're running the show with tracing in the schools.
So I, I, as I said, I think that, um, families have been, um, very cooperative and supportive in. Um, sharing information. Um, when things are not in Maven, parents have, you know, texted, emailed results to us, which have allowed us to. Sort of begin the process. Um, we work super closely. Um, with the Department of Public Health Nurses who are amazing and juggling as many balls as we are. Um, and I think that, you know, at the very beginning, we promised that for families and for staff that. As best as we were able, we would always err on the side of um, caution and. Trying to, you know, even if we overdo it every once in a while. Um, I, I do believe we've been pretty much on point. Um, and I think we're just, we're adjusting to taking advantage of the fact that the state put. Um, and I think we're just, we're adjusting to taking advantage of the fact that the state put hundreds of thousands of dollars into the CTC program and we hadn't really been availing ourselves of it. Uh, and so now, as, as cases have risen a little bit after the holidays and things, it's then very helpful to have other people help us with all those calls. As, as you can imagine, when you're handed a sports roster of twenty people um to call, make twenty calls and repeat the same message over and over and over. Um, it's, it's time-consuming and it, and it's, it's a little, as one of the Board of Health nurses said, soul-crushing. It's just, um, so, you know, we're trying to take advantage of a resource that's available to us. And we're learning to use it as effectively as we possibly can. Um, we had a staff meeting today and we talked to one of the Board of Health Nurses and sort of ironed out a few questions that we had. And I think we'll get, we'll get better using it as, as time goes on.
Any further questions or comments from the committee on any of these health updates? Okay, well, Segal, thank you. Jill, thank you for your time and, and your expertise tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So Dr. Thompson, I know this, um, is a segue into your report.
Yep, me, uh, grab the right paper. That will be, if I can find the right paper. I think I lost the papers. Oh, good. Oh, I, so, all right, I'm sorry. Um, so just, uh, ju- just a quick, um, simple one. We are going to make a, a slight adjustment. Uh, kindergarten screening this year was originally scheduled for April fifteenth and sixteenth. Uh, the thought is if we have it later in the, in, in the year, when it's warmer and we have the windows open, uh, it would be a safer event. So we're going to, uh, move the kindergarten screening from April fifteenth and sixteenth to May twenty-sixth and June second. Um, just wanted to kind of let, um, the community and the committee know that. Um, school testing, we've already, um, discussed, um, that one. Um, I do want to talk a, a little bit and, you know, I've gotten a few emails. We obviously had, um, you know, a, um, a, a public forum request and talk a little bit about reopening. Uh, this is, this has gained a lot of traction, which I think is, um, rather strange because the, uh, foundation or where we are standing does not seem to be much fir- much firmer uh than it was, uh, in October or November. So, you know, as I've said from the get-go, this is a complex, ever-changing conundrum. It is constantly, there's constantly new information coming out. There's constantly new challenges coming. Um, you know, it has been probably the, you know, the, the longest ten months of my life, I think at this point. It seems like ten years. Um, there is nothing I would rather do than to be back to normal, to be able to walk through classrooms again, to be able to go to uh sporting events again, to be able to go to plays again. And I know I speak for not only parents and students, but I also speak for the staff, the coaches, uh, and the advisors. However, we need to understand, and this is, this is where, this is going to be more of a, more of a speech than anything else. Sorry, folks. Uh, but this is where, I don't, you know, and for lack of a better word, the, the rhetoric coming from the governor's office and other places is getting a little disconcerting and, 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 and disingenuous. When he is talking about bringing s- schools back, he's specifically speaking about communities that are still fully remote or mostly remote. Norwood is not mostly remote. Norwood is doing a partial or a hybrid in-person program and has from the get-go. Okay? This past December, they came out with, uh, with, you know, synchronous or in-person learning standards. Norwood exceeds, doubles the two-week learning standard. We meet the one, we meet the two-week learning, in-person learning standard in one week. Okay? Now, I fully understand that this is not working for everybody. I fully understand that, you know, kids are hurting and kids want normal. Adults want normal too. Superintendent's want normal too. But to compare Norwood to other districts that are bringing people that back is not, it's not apples to apples. It is not oranges to oranges. So one example, this is the extreme, sorry, but one example is Dover Sherwin. Dover Sherwin at the elementary level has been full in person since October. Because their class size is twelve. They have new schools, newer schools, and their class size is twelve. They can remain at four to five feet distance, mostly six feet, and bring the kids back. So to say, why aren't we like Nor- uh, like Dover Sherwin, we don't have that amount of space. So to kind of go, um, you know, level by level, the elementary schools, we, we have them in as tight as we can at six feet. Okay? Um, we have increased numbers. We have increased positivity. Norwood is a high-risk community. Some of these other communities that might already be back are not high-risk. Okay? At the middle school, the reason why we have, one of the main reasons why we have a middle school building project is we do not have a ventilation system that works to the level it should be. There are sections of that building that we cannot use by the regulations we're working with now. At the high school, the MSBA does a great job of being very efficient and cost-effective with their building projects. However, that does not give you a lot of extra space. Anyone who has been in one of those high school classrooms, they're not very big. They are not very big and they were designed to give maybe about a foot between desks. So these are structural issues that, that we have at our buildings. There are some, I've gotten some letters and, and asks about, well, why don't we look at a different spot? They have to, a, a school building has to meet certain requirements to be considered safe for a school building, one of which is, you know, having nurses there, others are ventilation, other spaces along that one. We could probably find some big open spaces, but they might not be warm enough, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so those are problematic. And then you have a supervision and a transportation problem. Right now, and I say right now because I expect that this is probably going to change, right now, the transportation guidelines, regulations have not changed. The, uh, cafeteria regulations and guidelines have not changed. All right, um, and, you know, so a lot of these structures and these guidelines we're working on have not changed. So I think it's kind of funny that we're, that, you know, the state is talking about bringing kids back full in person when the medical experts are not supporting that with, with the requirements that we're supposed to follow. Vaccines a- and, and this is, this is an issue where when the vaccine came out, everybody could see the light at the end of the tunnel. The problem is the tunnel is very dark and it's much longer than we think it is. I, I, I don't want to be Debbie Downer, but, but that's the case. And unfortunately, as we heard just a minute ago, with, with, with the amount of vaccines that are out there and the amount of vaccines that are at this point trickling in, that tunnel just got longer. Now, that doesn't mean another month or so. Some things are corrected. Um, the federal government is getting involved with, with producing, you know, the, the support materials for the vaccination. Maybe that will help. We can have more vials and syringes. I, I, you know, I'm not an expert on, on that piece. But right now, we have over five hundred people who work for us. So at a hu- at a hundred doses a week, if we used every single one of those doses, and there's still going to be people, be people in phase one that are still in line. If we started in February, we would not finish in the month of February. Then you have to wait between twenty-three and twenty-eight days to have the second vaccination. And then you need to make, wait another twenty-eight days. You heard Segal talk about maybe the end of May, maybe the end of June. But here's the problem with the plan, folks. We can talk about all these factors, but until we know what it's going to be, it's very hard to move forward. So when I, when we were sitting back in June trying to pu- put together a plan, there's only so far you can go because you don't know what the next turn is going to be. You don't know what the next challenge is going to be. We don't know if, if vaccines are going to, uh, increase or not increase. That doesn't mean we're not planning and not thinking about it, not wishing for it. It means you can't plan for it because you don't know what's going to happen. So, so we have the vaccine. The, the other thing that that has come up, that is just starting to be explored and covered in the news is these new variants. Okay? The, the UK variant on Friday, the, the report out, out of the United Kingdom was not only was this fifty to sixty times more contagious, they also came out with thirty to forty percent more deadly and seems to affect young people at a higher rate. I'm not trying to scare people. That's not my point here, but there's a lot we don't know. And then, uh, on Saturday or Sunday, uh, Moderna came out talking about needing a booster for the South African variant because they're not sure that the vaccine, as it is put together now, will be effective on that. Right now, that's not here, but the UK va- variant is. Okay, so these are concerning factors. We don't know what will happen. But these are things that make planning a little bit more difficult. The other thing that I think people need to realize is that, and whether this is a determining factor or not, we're still waiting for guidance on this, but the vaccines that we are talking about are adult vaccines. They are not children vaccines. That is just currently being tested on children. So best-case scenario, July-ish, we will have a, a student vaccine. So that's another factor to, to consider. So what we are doing now is, is that we are planning for the pieces that have to come together. Okay? We need to look at reconfiguring classrooms. What does that look like? We need to look at, look at, you know, transportation. Currently, could we, uh, under the current guidelines, could we get the kids to school four or five days a week? Okay? You know, so those are the pieces that we are looking at so that when we have the information, we can put them together. But I'm, you know, very concerned, you know, it was a major major blow the beginning of, of last week when we found out that the, the level of of, of vaccines coming in, what was decreasing and then the supply is not meeting the, the demand. Um, I mean, originally, I think we all expected that that probably would be the case. Uh, that wasn't necessarily what was, was covered in the news. Um, but that's, you know, so that's kind of the reality of, of where we are. I don't want people out there to think that we don't care or don't want to bring people back, but there are factors that are barriers or hurdles that we have to jump over. And you can't, you can't just jump over one because there's still five or six other ones. Um, this is challenging for everybody. You know, we, we have looked and we are looking at trying to get more kids in our model. One reason why our in-school transmission is so low is the, is the structure of our hybrid. Where you're in for two days, everybody's remote on Wednesday and, and the other people are, are out or in. So you basically have five days between exposure in schools. Maybe the bad side of that is, is you're spending more time with your family and that's why we're seeing most of those cases coming from the family. But, you know, w- we definitely have kids that we are go- getting worried about. We just finished our, our Renaissance testing, uh, today. That is being used to, uh, look at student performance and how we can improve student performance. Um, and, you know, realize that this is a tough time, but you know, i- in some ways, Nor- Norwood ha- has exceed, exceeded with our hybrid model. Is it, and I said this from the get-go, is it as good as being in person five days a week? No. E- education was never set up to, to do this. You know, we will pivot. You know, we built the model so, so we could pivot quickly. Uh, you know, the other piece we'll have, we have to put the classrooms together. The classrooms are all apart. We have things in storage. So there's a little lead time and, uh, lead up in there. Um, but those things are being looked at. Principals are looking at their, uh, at, at their school buildings, but, you know, the, the first thing is, um, you know, i- is getting our, our teachers and, and principals and, and, and those folks um vaccinated. And I, I can tell you right now, a week ago, we, we had a plan on how we were going to do it. We were going to run it like we run our flu, flu clinics. We were going to alter part of our days. Uh, Mr. Mizuko and I had a detailed conversation about how could we get this done quickly? And then the reality of we don't have the vex, we don't have the shots to give to do it quickly. Um, so now, now we're back and we're looking at, okay, well, we need to prioritize. Who are the, who are the people that have the most close contact? And those people will go first. Um, you know, and who knows, maybe that will change in the next two weeks again. It's already changed three times in the last two weeks. So, uh, these are, these are the challenges. Um, you know, th- these are the challenges and, you know, we, we will continue to do what we can do when we can do it, but it's, it's very difficult. People are asking me, well, what's the plan for reopening schools? So, so my answer is, well, what's the plan for getting everybody vaccinated? What's the plan for get everybody getting, getting everybody on the bus? What's the plan for being able to use more of our school buildings? You know, we have, we have buildings that are sixty-plus, a hundred and eighteen years old. Th- th- they rely on windows to ventilate. Okay, so this is, these are, these are structural problems. They're, they're great buildings. They're, I'm not saying they're not, not worthy. But they weren't set up for this kind of pandemic. Um, a- a- and, and we need, we need to realize that. The other thing I, I will say, I did have a conversation with a parent who, um, who, you know, basically said, well, you know, the kids aren't getting it. I'll see, see what the big deal is. Adults are. This district has had it, two staff members seriously ill with this virus. Now, they did not catch it in school. Okay, but two people I was worried about. So, i- you know, I definitely care about the kids, but I, but I also have to care about my staff too. Um, so we need to kind of keep all of that in perspective as we move forward. Um, and the district needs to know, the parents need to know that that's, that's what we're going to do. Uh, we're going to do it well. We're going to do it safely. We're going to do it smartly. Um, we have not flipped between models and all over the place. We had a model that is, that has held us pretty well and given us a lot of flexibility moving forward. Um, you know, and trust me, you know, I, one of the things I, I love doing, what was walking through and visiting schools a- and visiting classrooms. Um, as a father of, of an essential healthcare worker who comes home every ni- e- e- every night after taking care of COVID patients, I'm not doing that because just in case I might be carrying something. Okay, so, you know, and it's, it's very hard not doing that because that's what I signed up for. So with that, Madam Chair, I don't know if you want me to go into the strategic plan or if we want to, uh, revisit this or if I've said enough on this for everybody, it's fine too.
Um, I, I'll, I just want to comment very briefly on, on two things. One, thank you for caring, Dr. Thompson, because I do think that you're sincere and compassionate and you have a lot of empathy for everybody. And I just want to acknowledge that. And I think it's clear now. Um, but considering that I talked to you multiple times every day, uh, for the last ten months, um, I can promise the talent of Norwood, um, how much you really do care and, and, and how much you're taking this, you know, really to heart. So I just want to thank you. Um, but I also just want to let the community know that a lot of what Dr. Thompson has said is in other resources in writing that are on our website. And as I was listening to you, Dr. Thompson, talk about the challenges that Norwood has that maybe some other districts don't, I did go back to our reopening plan that is on our website. Um, and if you go to page seventeen of the thirty-four-page plan, it lists in detail why the fully reopening in person wasn't an option for Norwood. Um, and just as a reminder to the community, we had to submit reopening plans to DESI, um, a draft in July and then the final version in August. And they did ask each district to assess fully in-person, hybrid and fully remote and make your case for why or why not you could do each of those. Um, and if you go to page seventeen of this thirty-four-page document, there is then a link that takes you to the, um, the draft, the, the first form of July thirty-first submission. And that's where you're going to get into all the specifics at each different level, what the different challenges are. Um, it's my understanding so far that none of those challenges have changed. Um, but I would just ask Dr. Thompson if the rest of the committee agrees with me. If you could just review that again with your admin team and confirm. No, those haven't changed or yes, if any of that has changed at any level. Um, if you could report back to us at the next meeting, if the full committee agrees you would like that update. And then the last thing I would just tell the, the community, you know, the conditions of the buildings, uh, that has been well documented. And then the last thing I would just tell the the community, you know, the conditions of the buildings, uh, that has been well documented as well. If you go to the Norwood uh School Committee page, um, under the um long-range planning, uh, there is a hundreds and hundreds page document of a facility report of every building, every school building in town and all of their challenges as well. So, um, none of this is being made up. All of this is factual. All of this is documented. We're happy to answer questions, um, but I just ask people to please be informed. Um, but are there any other questions or updates um based on what Dr. Thompson shared? Maya?
I just wanted to react to a couple of things. Um, one thing is, I think, um, now that we have a public forum email, I think sometimes that um it people don't necessarily know what the best way to contact us is. And if you are looking, if you have a specific question and you want to ask the school committee and get an answer directly to that, all of our individual school committee um emails are on the um are on the the town website and on the school committee, on the school website. And if you write to the the school committee, we will answer you. But things that come before a public forum, that's just an opportunity for people to get their point of view out in a public setting. And um, we as a practice do not respond to um specific things in uh public forum, not because we don't want to engage in conversation, but because we don't always know what will come up at public forum. And we, under open meeting law, have to stick to the agenda of pub, you know, things that we have said in advance, we will be talking about. So um, people have sometimes written to us about something um in public or people have come before public forum, back when we used to have public forum in person. And they have raised a topic that was not on our agenda for that evening. And then we cannot talk about it that evening because it's not on our agenda. Um, so uh, I do encourage people to use public forum. I'm not trying to discourage that. But I do also want to let people know that if there's have specific questions or just want to share an opinion with us privately, then um, that's what our regular school committee addresses are for. And so if you, when you send to the, to the public forum one, what is going to happen is you get to have you know, an opportunity to have your uh point of view shared with not only the school committee, but the the public. But I think that uh overall, you know, we, I definitely am in support of the idea of having Dr. Thompson review again what the the limitations are and the restrictions. And I I did want to address one item that I know was mentioned in um public forum was that, you know, some of the elementary classes are very small. But many of our elementary classes also are right at the level of how many bodies we can fit in and maintain the spacing that we're, we need to maintain. So um, we, I'm not saying that a change would need to be made. Um, if we, that any change need, has to happen district-wide. It's not that, oh, the kindergarten can't come back at full-time because it won't work at the high school. That's not what I think anybody is saying, but um it's not enough to just, it will work in one classroom. We need to look at um at what will work for for the district or at least, you know, for a level. And and um you know, try to be equitable across the district.
I I would just briefly ask back to you, Maya, because you reminded me um back in August before the, before the committee approved the hybrid and the RLA model. Um, as a budget subcommittee, you know, Maya and I were really looking at the request for the staffing and asked, well, why do we need this staff? Can't you get like one more first grader in that classroom? Um, and Paul Riccardi, our director of facilities, he did put together a spreadsheet that I know is in our drive somewhere from August um, for every class across the district and I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Thompson, but at the elementary level, the classes could only fit between ten and fourteen kids. And some schools like the Callahan and the Bolch, those are physically smaller classrooms. Where the Cleveland and Prescott and Old Hand, those are physically larger classrooms. So sometimes there are only six and seven, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, because thirteen can't fit six feet apart on the same day.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, that is true. And and we have, you know, we didn't, we didn't say you can only have ten in every first grade classroom. And they're basically we max the number that we can fit in that school's classroom in there, you know, and, you know, and and the middle school, for the most part, they have moved the walls, so using all, can only use outside rooms. Um, and moving walls out of the way so that you can have the whole class in there, but they're able to be separated.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Thompson before he moves on to the strategic planning update? Okay, Dr. Thompson?
Okay, so strategic planning, uh, we did have a meeting last week where we started looking at, basically, we added key performance indicators in, the last piece is we need to have the right named assignments. So it's a little bit of cleaning up um the software in there and then we will be good to go. So I'm hoping that by this time next year, next year, next week, next meeting, we will have that um straightened out and and ready to go. Uh, but uh, we are close. I had hoped to try to have a meeting the end of this week, but I yet to even have a second to even think about trying to plan it, unfortunately, so we'll have to. And that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Uh, so at this time, we'll move along in our agenda um to the budget topics. Karen, do you want to stay with the order that's on the agenda or do you want to pull um out uh transportation piece first?
Uh, it's up to you. Doesn't matter to me. If you want to do the budget or transportation, whichever way you want to do it.
Just trying to be mindful of people's time and who has to stick it out with us to the end anyway and.
Yeah, let's do, yeah, simply because we don't, he's might be driving tomorrow morning, so let's.
So, so Mr. Bishop, thank you for joining us again tonight. Um, Mr. Bishop is the director of transportation. Um, and he and Ms. Sheridan are providing an update with us tonight on a topic that we had paused because of the pandemic, um, which is um benefits uh for the van drivers.
I'm so, I'm gonna have Bryn, um Bryn Pasternak, by the way, is with us tonight and she's going to be presenting the reports for me. She's taking over for Dave. Um, and uh Bryn is doing a wonderful job for us and I'm so excited for her to be here tonight. Um, she's going to first bring up um the uh transportation budget so that you can see um the total um cost of the wages that we have budgeted for. And also some of the areas that um Al has some savings in. Uh, this is important as he goes through his presentation, just to show you the total cost as well as the savings in which he's going to try to um use that money to pay for um his increases in his, his um wages. So if you look at the top, um, he's got the, we've got the, I've got highlighted. Um, you've got the sped transportation drivers and the sped monitors, they're highlighted in like a peach. Um, and you'll see the total available budget for the um drivers and the monitors wages is seven hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and forty-seven. Uh, and then down lower, there's a highlighted peach area that shows you there's some available budget right now in the transportation McKinney Vento and contracted service. Um, that's the outside contracted services that we were using before. But now Al has brought all his runs in-house, so we are no longer using any of the outside contracted services for any of our special education runs. So that has given us um a nice cost savings. Uh, so the um, the the available, um I'm sorry, the available budget in the contracted service is a hundred and seventy thousand, three seventy-nine. So the total budget that he has with the cost savings and the drivers and the monitors um budgeted is nine sixty-five, six twenty-six. Um, when he goes through his presentation, you'll see one of his slides where um he's uh suggesting um an additional cost of nine sixty-five, three twenty. And if we did go with that scenario, we just wanted to show you that he does have the available budget um in his, money in his budget right now. Um, so uh, that's how we wanted to start with the budget, just so that you can see the numbers before we go through his presentation. Um, and then from here, if you don't have any questions, I'm going to have Al um bring up. He's got a nice PowerPoint that he's going to be bringing up.
Thanks, Karen. Um, I'm just going to put one slide up while uh I uh stop my presentation here.
And before you start, Al, I did also want to give one more thing is uh, the available balance in is revolving fund at the moment is two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six oh one. So he does have a little bit of a cushion to fall back on uh in case he needs to.
Great. Uh, before I um actually get into the uh presentation on the staff, I'd just like to kind of bring you up to date. A lot's happened since I last met with you in February. Um, I wanted to begin by thanking the committee for continuing to pay our staff during the shutdown. It was uh not only well received by the staff, it was uh greatly instrumental in preserving our workforce. Um, I'd like to do a little brief recap on what the Transportation Department has been doing since February, March. Uh, a week or so after the nationwide shutdown, uh, we were contacted contacted by both HESCO and the Town Managers Office to help in delivering meals to the elderly. Uh, most of the delivery volunteers were older themselves and in the greater risk category and as such could no longer safely volunteer the services. Uh, to meet that need, we manned uh four to five vans with eight to ten drivers and monitors who acted as runners to pick up the slack. The staff wanted to give back since they were being paid anyway. Uh, this continued through the end of the school year and in July, a COVID grant was received to allow for a separate payroll account for these services which continue uh through today. Um, your transportation staff has delivered over thirty thousand meals since uh March. While doing all this, in June of last year, we received calls from both Paul Riccardi and the Fire Department to respond with as many vehicles as possible to the uh Norwood Hospital during their major flood event. Uh, we responded in forty-five minutes with uh twelve buses and vans and stood by for almost five hours to be utilized in any that the uh team necessary. Um, in July, we started transport for some of the summer programs, which gave us some practice in transport under the new guest DESI guidelines. Um, it quickly became apparent that we guidelines need more vehicle. We had added four vans that were originally purchased as replacements. But instead of replacements, they were pressed into service um as additional vehicles. Uh, in addition to that, our fifth minibus, which is normally kept as a spare because every time we lose a a minibus due to a mechanical or whatever, it requires three to four vans to uh replace it because the seating capacity in these buses was uh eighteen to twenty. Um, but that was pressed into service. Um, it's all been difficult, uh, but we're doing the best to get it all done. Uh, with regard to our um transport today, um, we're following all of the DESI guidelines. The vehicles are disinfected daily. Um, they're equipped with spare masks and sanitizer. And uh, all of the DESI guidelines are followed to the best of our ability. Um, as you can imagine, uh, doing transports with special needs children and trying to keep masks on them at times is uh um difficult at best. The cameras we installed, which you folks approved a couple of years ago, have helped in uh some of our tracing incidents when we want to look back at a video and see how close uh children were or where they exactly were in the van. And uh, the cameras have also been utilized many times in reviewing incidents as well as for training to learn how to perform better. Uh, sometimes we've had an incident with uh uh a child and we review the tape and we find out that, you know, maybe with uh additional training from some professionals, we could have handled uh the child better. And uh, we've done that in a number of incidents. The big battle, which is why I'm here tonight, is to continue to uh retain and hire drivers and monitors. Uh, there are some handicaps to that process and the handicaps are and continue to be the closing gap between the minimum wage as it increases every year, which may actually be increased right to fifteen dollars an hour under the current administration. And uh, that difference between the minimum wage and our staff's current wages. In addition to that, there's a lot of competition in the field, not only with regard to wages, but benefits. One of the things that I run into quite often is if I am interviewing a driver or monitor who's also interviewing with a private contractor. Um, the state mandate prevents our staff from collecting unemployment during the off-season and uh that handicaps us sometimes in our ability to hire people. When we met last in February, I was asked, and I believe it was Mr. Catania who asked me to cost out the recommendations I had made at that time. Um, I have updated the recommendations and the associated costs. Um, the slide that I had up here while I was basically um starting my dialogue here was to kind of give you just the last three years of where we are. Um, our total number of students from the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year is in, is uh increased from one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and eighty-five plus or minus.
Did you mean to share the slides?
I'm sorry?
Were you intending to share the slides right now?
Oh, yeah, is the slide on there? No?
I don't see it. Do others see it?
Hold on one second.
Sure.
Let me uh I don't know why it's not on there. Let me see here. There we go. I forgot one button.
That's right, you need Bryn.
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. Let's see, share my screen. Here we go. Okay.
Okay.
Now, let me here we go. Can you see it now?
That's perfect. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Um, in any event, uh, this slide was basically just going to indicate um where we've come in the last three years, the student growth from one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and eighty-five plus or minus. Our inventory, when I became director, we had nineteen vans and five buses, but seven vans were parked due to lack of uh drivers. Uh, we went on a campaign to hire drivers. And uh, as of today, um, all vans are in use. Our driver head count is up to uh I'm going to look at my notes here. Our driver head count is up to twenty-eight. We have uh pressed the uh four of the vans we bought as replacement vans actually into service so that we can maintain the social distancing. Um, I know, again, one of the concerns that the whole committee had, but especially Mr. Catania, was the amount of money we were spending on the outside vendors. And I think that the budget sheet that uh Karen put up was um probably uh, it was self-evident that we've, we've brought everything in-house and we've retained uh that hundred and seventy-five, one hundred and eighty thousand we were spending, um, we're not spending anymore. Um, let's see here, let's see if I can go on to the next one. Um, the next slide is basically just a recap. It's uh something I'm going to breeze right through, but I know that uh uh, the folks in the FinCom had some interest in this, but this is just our current vehicle identification list. Um, again, we've uh um, got some vehicles right now. They're marked with As that are uh in the process of being replaced. We've actually taken delivery, but uh, we're in the process of registering them and decal-ing them and getting inspections done that we need to. Um, we did replace two of the wheelchair vans a couple of years ago. We are in desperate need of probably uh one more. Um, if one of the wheelchair vans broke, uh, we do have two of the older ones, the O-nines that we kept that have over two hundred thousand miles on them that are showing serious signs of rotten corrosion and of course, part of the. corrosion and of course, part of the problem is we've never had a refreshment program for these vehicles. In any event, on the bottom, I just put down the immediate short-term need, which is probably one more minibus since they're all in service. If one broke down, we couldn't handle the overflow in the vans because all of the vans are in service. Again, if a wheelchair van broke down, we don't have the ability to transport the children that are in need of wheelchair transportation. And then we'd need to continue replacing the O9 vans, which are basically way, way, way overdue. Looking forward, I think after this year, we probably could get into a refreshment program where we got one or two vans every other year and I think that would probably be sufficient. The next, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Al, I just wanted to note that this year we did, we're lucky enough to get two vans out of grant money.
Yes, and that was greatly appreciated. For the fiscal year, we actually have replaced six vans through capital, through town meeting and two additional vans through grants. So that's been, that's been a great, great help in trying to keep the fleet operating. The next slide basically just shows the current employee compensation and also the recommendation with regard to benefits. We did, if you recall back in February, grant a 2.5% increase to the drivers, which took them from $16 an hour to 1640. It took the monitors, I believe, from 15 an hour to 1538. And there was an increase also for the CDL, of the bus drivers. The recommendation I have right now is we are way low on the hourly wage to the drivers. And again, we have that gap that continues to shrink between minimum wage and what they're currently being paid. I would recommend now an increase for the monitors to 1650 per hour, 18 on the 7D drivers and 22 on the CDL drivers. After that, I would request a moderate 2.5% increase for 2022, 2023. We obviously could talk about that next year, but I would recommend a review at least every three years with regard to whatever may be adopted. With regard to current benefits, the only benefit they have really is they get 12 hours of sick time. So when I got here, the initial, I shouldn't say it was a mandate, the initial protocol, if you will, was to keep the drivers below 20 hours a week and as such, they were granted sick time in the amount of four hours per day or 12 hours total, three sick days. On that same subject, we would not be paying, we would not have eliminated the outside vendors if the drivers didn't step up to the plate and drive more. Most of the drivers are doing an AM and a PM shift. A lot of them are doing some mid-shifts. We have days that are early release, as you can imagine, we're moving these 180-some-odd kids to probably 40 or 45 different schools all over the district, including the McKinney-Vento. We have one child that we pick up every day in Pepperell every morning. So that driver leaves approximately 4:45 in the morning, drives an hour and 15, hour and 20 minutes up to Pepperell, picks up the child, an hour and 20 minutes back to school and does the same thing in the afternoon. That same driver, a lot of times during the middle of the day, will volunteer if there's an early release at this school or that school or whatever. So again, with regard to the number of hours they work, it's certainly a lot greater than it was in the beginning, but without the hours being worked, we would be just farming all this out again. We'd be using outside vendors. The going rate for the outside vendors today is approximately 185 to 225, 230 dollars a day per student. So it doesn't take much in the way of a math wizard to take 180 days of school times 180 kids times, you know, 200 dollars a day. That quickly grows to four, four and a half million dollars and we're doing it in-house for around a million dollars. My recommendation would be that we provide the drivers with sick days similar to what other town employees are getting, five sick days a year. They currently have no vacation time. The vacation time that I'm recommending would be five paid days for the first one to five years to be utilized only during the time period that school is not in session. So it'd be outside the 180 days of work that they were hired for. I'd be recommending three personal days and currently they're not paid for any holidays. And in fact, a lot of the drivers drive on holidays. Martin Luther King Day, we had three or four schools that were open that we were driving and that does happen on other holidays also. And then with regard to reimbursement, the committee did grant some time ago reimbursement for their licensure renewal. Well, the licensure renewal itself is $15 a year. The biggest expense, however, is the medical that they have to, have to run to go. The medical is about $100 per medical. If you're over the age of 70, it has to be done twice a year. And so some of these people that again are, you know, my census tends to be over the age of 70, some of these people are over the age of 70 and, you know, on a fixed income, but they're spending a couple hundred dollars a year on medicals. The next slide I'll show you, and again, I'm going to keep this brief. I know that you all have a pretty extensive meeting here tonight, but I just wanted to do a cost analysis on what the benefits would cost in today's wages, what they're being paid now. I had to use an average wage because the number of CDL drivers goes up and down as does monitors and 70s, but if you took their current wages and divided it by three, it averages about 1751 an hour, our average. And these are very, very conservative numbers. If anything, they're way towards the conservative end of the spectrum. We average about 1,200 work hours a week, which is about 248 hours per day. The cars per day is $4,342. So the cost per year currently is running around 781,000. If we took that same cost per day, 43, 42, and just took the sick days, personal days, vacation days, holidays, bereavement, whatever, and multiplied them out, the benefit package would be approximately 116,000 a year. Again, we spent 175,000 or budgeted 175,000 of outside vendors and we've realized that that savings and I think it could, some of it could be put to use trying to retain and help us with additional hirings. The next slide, and I'm not going to go through all the slides, just shows what it would look like with an increase in the wage to 1850 an hour, $18 an hour. We would raise the monitors hopefully to 1650 and the CDL drivers to 22. And again, the total, if you walk through the whole thing, comes out to about 124,000 a year. One side note, again, because of the census of our staff, most of us, I shouldn't say most of us, practically all of us are in Medicare, so healthcare is really not an issue. But I think the wage and maybe holidays, et cetera, are probably of greater importance. In any event, I'm here to answer any questions you have and I didn't want to bore you any further. I know that you have a big agenda tonight, so I will back out of my slides and answer any questions you have.
I just want to add one thing on that, that the cost analysis that we did was for a full year, so it would be prorated if they raise one into effect now. Right, so we did the total cost.
Again, I tried to present it as conservative as I could. Those are the high-end numbers, not what I think the numbers are going to be, but in the spirit of transparency and again, having come from the private sector, I always plan for the worst and hope for the best.
Thank you Al for that thorough analysis. You always do a great job bringing the information to us, so I appreciate that. And I also just want to thank you for all that your department has been doing. I knew most of what you shared. I did not know you were involved when the flood happened at the hospital and it doesn't surprise me that you and your team stood, you know, stepped up and did that, but thank you for doing that for our community.
Thank you.
Yeah, so questions from the committee? Dave?
Al, really amazing job that you and the team have done. I mean, it's just bringing in-house everything you've done. It's saved the town a ton of money. So I just was wondering if you can speak a bit about why there's such a shortage of drivers? I mean, it was a dire situation before and I've read in the news that a lot of people are retiring with COVID, less drivers. I know in my business, trucking rates have gone up tremendously nationally, but what's it going to take to get, is this what we need to do to get the right people hired? Because, you know, we do want to keep the good people that we have, but also, let's be blunt, we can't have a whole bunch of people with benefits going over 20 hours per week.
I agree with you David, however, I, we've got a great team. My goal right now is to retain who we have and continue to add. And I probably interview two to three to four people a week and I'm losing, I'm losing them to Franklin, I'm losing them to Randolph. I'm not losing as many to the private sector as I am to the government sector and the primary reason is they all offer benefits. In the package that I gave you back in February, I had included in that package copies and samples of a lot of the contracts with other communities. And again, you know, I feel kind of funny here in that I'm in a position of playing catch-up, but I'm also in a position of I'm trying to plan for the future. And if we don't spend this money, if we don't utilize it to the best of our ability, I can't plan for the future. I would rather be interviewing people knowing that I'm going to have them in five years than knowing that I'm just training another guy that's going to be gone in six months. And again, you know, another thing that I mentioned in the very beginning was that if you work for a YCN or a Vanpool or whatever and the 180 days of school are over in June, they collect unemployment. We can't under the state law, so that's a handicap for me right out of the gate. So I, it's been difficult Dave, but word of mouth has been great, but I've also shifted gears. When I first got here, if we wanted drivers, we went on to, you know, we'd advertise in the Knott paper or we would put something on Knott Cable TV. Well, now I'm on Indeed, I'm on a lot of the other websites and I'm getting more interest through that. But, you know, I think we have to continue to be creative and I'm just trying to do the job for you. This is retirement, not for me.
And just to follow up to that, so if we don't do this, we're going to be back to the old situation where we're spending ungodly amounts of money on outsourcing bus service if we can even get it, is what you're saying.
I don't want to be telling you in a year that everything went backward and yeah, it's my fault. I don't want to do that. You know, I also, Dave, I feel like this was a chicken or the egg thing. When we, when things slowed down in March, Marie and I never stopped going in the office and they said, "We have got to figure a way to not use outside vendors." And she goes, "Well, how are we going to do that?" And I said, "Don't use them. Just stop it. We're not using, you don't use, you call nobody without talking to me first, I'll drive." And, you know, once we started fine-tuning routes, doubling up on routes, we made it work.
There are other questions for Mr. Bishop?
Joan, I think Joan has a question.
Is Joan on? I thought we lost her. Did she join again?
Yep, she's on. Oh, Jill, do you have a question?
I don't have a question. I just, I just want to support Al because since this COVID thing has consumed us, there, sometimes we've had students that have come to school who we find out have exposure and I call Al and whether it's him or he does some kind of magic, he gets our kids home safely. And some of his drivers are the most amazing, caring, thoughtful, kind, loving people. They go above and beyond for our students. They bring them snacks or they sing songs with them. It's a, he does an amazing job of attracting people that not only transport our students, but really love and care for them.
Thank you Jill for sharing that.
And he has the lovely Marie that works with him who does a great job as well.
Absolutely. She is the motherboard of the computer.
If I could just second that, I mean, obviously my department works very closely with Al and his, his crew over there and they are just unbelievable, day in and day out. Regardless of what the situation is, they are always willing to help us out, make it work. I mean, Al even sits in on trainings with schools to figure out what's the best way to safely get kids to and from home and school. I can't say enough about how wonderful they are, so I just wanted to publicly say thank you to Al and his crew.
Thank you, Mar. Maya?
I'd like to kind of discuss this a little bit separately, the pay and then the potential benefits that we're talking about, because I feel like they're, they're separate issues. So with regard to pay, I do know that the state just increased the state minimum wage as of January 1 and so I really do think that that's a real problem. And so I would recommend that we, well, I would like to make a motion that we adopt Mr. Bishop's recommendation for the pay increase for this year. I don't know that it's appropriate to talk about raises for next year and the year after yet because we don't know where we're going to be at as a, in a financial situation, but I would like to make a motion to, to adopt the, so I'm trying to find what the numbers are. So let's see. So I guess I would make a motion for an immediate pay increase to 1650 for the monitors, $18 for the drivers and $22 for the CDL drivers.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
I'll gladly second that.
Thank you Dave for those questions. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's four, but is Joan back? No, okay, so that passes 4-0.
And I, I definitely understand concerns about, about like paid sick time and things like that. And I think that I was the only one of the current committee who was on the committee when we voted to give the drivers paid sick time and that was partly in response to the state law that was requiring paid sick time for a lot of part-time positions. It doesn't actually apply to municipal employers, but it was something that the school committee wanted to do. And, and I don't think we ever, you know, to my recollection, it wasn't the intent of the committee at the time to limit it to just, you know, four hours. We weren't trying to skimp on that sick time. We were trying to give people the equivalent of three sick days. And, and then, as you said, working conditions have changed a little bit since then and so I think that your proposal of five sick days over the year makes sense. I also think that, that I would be willing to entertain the, either the paid vacation and, and personal days or the holiday pay. I'm not sure that doing both at once necessarily makes sense, so kind of curious if you had to prioritize between those, what do you think is important?
I would say the holiday pay really because again, we have some drivers that are working the holiday anyway. You know, I think that that makes more sense, at least for the short term.
So I'll make a motion to, to increase to five, six days a year and give them the 10 holidays that you recommend.
Before we, I'll happily second that, I just have a question for Al first, if you don't mind.
All right, go ahead Dave.
So you said that your drivers are working on the holidays, so are they being paid the wages on the holidays when they're working hourly or they're not? It's a salary position?
No, they're being paid their regular hourly pay and again, because they're not over 40, they don't get paid time and a half. So they're just, they're just working the day for regular pay. So they're just, they're just working the day for regular pay.
Got it. So you're saying when they're working holiday, that they should get the time and half that they deserve, because it's a holiday, Christmas, Thanksgiving, whatever. I got it. Yeah, uh, that's what's fair.
Okay, so Maya, you, your motion was the five sick days and the ten holidays, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay, and Dave, you seconded that. Thank you. So further discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, Joan, you're back. Was that a yes?
Yeah, it was a yes.
Okay, so that one passes five zero.
Thank you very much. It's uh greatly appreciated, and I know that uh um, you know, you've, you've got a great bunch of people there, and I hope to continue to build on it.
So just so we're, we're all clear on any next steps or requests from the committee for Ms. Sheridan and Mr. Bishop to continue looking into, was there anything at this time the committee is asking them to do? Maya?
I just think that as we start to build the F Y twenty-two budget, then um you know, we can put in a proposal for potentially a, a you know, cost of living increase at that point, and then it would be discussed as part of the regular budget process. But not to make any commitments today, because we haven't yet looked at the budget.
That makes sense to me, okay. Anything more from the committee on, on transportation? All right, well, thank you, Mr. Bishop, for joining all the work you're doing.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, so Karen, back to you for the rest of your budget report.
Okey dokey, here we go. Um, I'm gonna start with the budget transfers, all right? Um, so you have one uh budget transfer that has to be approved by the school committee. Uh, the reasoning for this, it is um under the threshold of the twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, but it crosses over the DESI function code lines, and in your policy, um, when it crosses over the function codes, then we have to get a school committee approval on it. Um, so it is um fifteen thousand dollars being transferred from a parent liaison account. Um, it's going to be transferred into the special education tutoring services. Um, the parent liaison account right now currently has a balance of fifteen thousand eight eighty-eight, so there is the available funds there. Um, and the reasoning for this is simple that the sped tutoring services seems to have been under budgeted this year, and there was a need for some more funds there. Um, it has been requested by Laurie Semino, Director of Pupil Services.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. Is there a motion to approve this budget transfer?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave, second?
Second.
Thank you, Emery. Any further discussion or questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero.
Okay, um, the next thing um is going to be the budget transfers approved by the superintendent, um which again is working wonderfully. Um, the uh total um that has been through this uh re- through January twenty-first, um, is twenty-nine thousand two hundred and forty um that Dave has signed for this period. Um, there is a detail of um the ones that he has approved. Um, but unless you have any questions, I was just gonna give you the total of the twenty-nine thousand two hundred and forty. All of them were under the threshold, all of them were with, within the same DESI function codes. So if anybody has any questions, otherwise um, that's the budget transfers that Dave signed.
Thank you, Karen, and just as a reminder to everybody, you know, with that updated policy that we approved, um you'll be giving us this type of report on a monthly basis.
And again, that there, it's working um wonderfully. It's um really improved uh the pace of people being able to purchase with some of these smaller um budget transfers. Um, uh, so now I'm gonna move on to um that uh budget to date, so it's second quarter um through December thirty-first um two thousand and twenty. Um, so I'm gonna have Bryn go all the way down to the bottom to start, um and if you look on your report um at the bottom, um, your total revised budget for F Y twenty-one is fifty-three million one hundred and seventy thousand one hundred and seventeen eight forty-nine. Um, it includes an additional three eighty-one one fifty-eight of additional funds that were approved at the Fall Town Meeting for the hybrid remote learning due to the COVID pandemic. Um, so you see highlighted in peach, that's the difference between the original appropriation and the revised budget. Um, to date, you've expended nineteen thousand seven ninety-five seven twenty-three. Your encumbered is twenty-nine thousand seven eighty-two five fifty-seven uh with a year-to-date balance of three million five thirty-nine five sixty-nine. Um, the total percentage used um is thirty-seven percent, but that's only the actual expended. If you include your encumbered in that, then you've got up to ninety-three percent of the um of your budget that is used. Um, the, I've also if noted at the bottom, the circuit breaker that you have budgeted for this year. So we started with a budget of two million seven hundred and fifty-five for the circuit breaker. Now, the circuit breaker funds, um the revenue that comes in this, into the state, um, it can be used to be applied towards some of your special education expenditures. In this case, we use it against the tuition. Um, so if we applied the two million seven fifty-five, and we also have an additional circuit breaker offset that we added on um later in the budget with the pandemic, and that is five hundred thousand, then that brings you down to an adjusted year-to-date balance of six million seven ninety-four five sixty-nine. So that's just to see if we did apply all of your circuit breaker funds, that's where you are right now. Um, we don't usually do that circuit breaker um adjustment. I'd be doing one um probably this month. Um, but we um usually don't do the final circuit breaker adjustment till later in the year, um when we see where we are with the, with the um accounts. Um, if, if you go to the far right, uh there's a column that I added. It lists the expenditures that are on hold due to the um, the hybrid and remote, remote learning model. Um, when we got the three hundred and eighty-one thousand, well, excuse me, one fifty-eight from the town. Uh, there was a stipulation that we were going to also participate in that, so we've held back some expenditures. We increased the circuit breaker. Um, so they're listed, just for your reference on the side. Um, there's one, uh, let's see, I think it's, is it row thirty-four that has one? You'll see, um, there's some, uh, one example would be um the there was um some of the what it was, the um software that we've held back, that some that was paid by grants. Uh, there was um trying to see if I look back over. Hold on one second. Another example would be, there's a hundred and twenty-six thousand on the pupil transportation. So just to give you an idea of the expenditures that we've held back um for that, okay? Um, I've shaded, there's, there's some cells that are shaded in peach. Um, those are payroll accounts to review for the payroll reserve fund that we're gonna do some adjustments, some later adjustments. Um, there's also shaded in a light blue. Those are some overages that I see that slipped through the MUNIS system. Um, and I've had the principals looking at that to do the budget transfers on those. Um, the MUNIS system right now is a bottom-line budget, and um so some of these expenditures have slipped through. A lot of them are very small, but I did um talk to the principals and administrators on that, so they're reviewing it now so they can do their budget transfers. Um, I've also shaded in green, and those are all your payroll accounts, just so that you can know which ones are your payroll accounts. Um, the next uh worksheet that we're gonna go to is the hybrid remote budget. So as I indicated, there was three hundred and eighty-one thousand one hundred and fifty-eight that, that was approved at that Fall Town Meeting. Um, and of that, um, I give you a listing of the money that has been um spent to date on that, is allocated to date on that, be it encumbered or expended. Um, and it leaves you with a balance of a hundred seventy-three five eighty-four. Um, there's also a listing of the positions that were hired. Um, the reasoning as of right now for that, the amount of money that you have left is due to some prorating of salaries, people that started later in the year. And also the, one of the instructional tech specialists has not been hired. Um, it does not appear at this time that they're going to be hiring that second instructional tech specialist. I'm not sure if that will change later on, but as of right now, it does not appear that they're going to be hiring that. Um, the, the next worksheet that we're going on to is the collective bargaining reserve. Um, this is just a um sheet that I'm going to be updating with every report that I give you of the adjustments that I'm making towards the collective bargaining reserve to see your balance. Uh, right now, this is still a report that I'm working on. I'm still doing some adjustments to the collective bargaining reserve. But as of right now, those are ones that I have made to date. All right, uh before we get into the grants um and revolving, does anybody have any questions thus far? All right, um, we'll move on to the grant awards then. Um, the next worksheet um I've given you is, this is a listing of all your grants that I have noted since since I've started here. So I'm gonna keep this tally going so that you'll see um what your grants are through the years. It gives you the um, the total of the grant award, um the accounts that have the grants. Um, also on the far right, um, that with, I've added some descriptions of some of what is being um expended in those grants. Um, as we, if we do any amendments on the grants, you'll see down um towards the end, there's some highlighted yellow. So if a grant is amended, then you'll see it highlighted in yellow and what has, it's been amended. Um, this is going to be um added to, um, I have a Google Drive for the administrators so that they'll always un- see all their updated grants, of what the accounts are for the grant, and what the balance, what their amount of money they have in each category for the grants. Um, and then we'll move on to the next one, which is the grant update. Um, the grant update is more showing you what you have left in your grants, what has been expended, um what you've been awarded, um what um the year-to-date balances those in those categories, the funds that you've received. Any of the grants that have already been expended in full, the, the final reports have been completed. Um, so you'll see in those, um, that if we look at the um first quarter of it, you'll see I've got the F Y nineteen grant awards, F Y twenty grant awards, the F Y twenty-one grant awards. And um this way, you'll have kind of, every year you'll be able to see your history of your grant awards. Um, you'll see at the bottom on F Y twenty-one grant awards this year, thus far, a three million five thousand three thirty-seven, which is much larger than other years due to the pandemic. We've got some really nice grants this year um from the government um for that, and we've got some more coming. So um, this is, it is definitely gonna be higher. We just um, not on this yet is, there's a food service grant that we got. Um, that was in, I think it was about twenty-seven thousand dollars um that Eli got. Um, and that was part of the COVID, and then there's another large COVID one coming through. So on your next update, you'll see those grants in this spreadsheet. Um, you also see, like you said, the balances that are remaining in these um grants. Um, if you go over to the far right, you'll see highlighted, I'll say, if it's expended in full, uh, the date that the final report um has been completed. All right? Um, I've also highlighted in yellow, those are the special education grants, um just uh for, as a reference. You're right. Um, moving on to the revolving fund update. Uh, the revolving fund update again, um is the um beginning balance, um the revenue that you've received in for your rev- for your revolving accounts, um, the expenditures that have been spent in your revenue accounts, as well as your balances. Um, the beginning balance for all your revolving fund is your ending balance from the previous year, because revolving funds, unlike grants, they revolve from year to year, so any money that you have left in your balances will move over to the following year. When it got to grants, though, grants have an end date. So some grants are one year, some grants could be two years, so you really have to keep an eye on your um end date for your grants, because if you haven't expended in full your grant and your end date comes, that money's going back. So we're really watching the grants, keeping an eye on the balances that they are, and reaching out to people if there's some money to be spent, indicating, okay, there's money to be spent. And that could cause um you doing an amendment, because sometimes what your plan was has changed, as you can see this year especially. So then, um, with that case, we'll do an amendment and then let the um individuals know. All right, these are the categories that you have to spend right now. We recently did an amendment to the Essig Grant where um and we're going to be spending, I think it's about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars um for some more Chromebooks. Um, and so that just got amended, approved by the Department of Ed. Um, I just put the budget in, and Joe is in the process of putting that order through Beverly, who um handles a lot of my grants. Um, thank you, Beverly, while I have, um, while I can. I, and um, Joe is quick like a bunny to spend his money, so if you ever need money spent on a grant, you would just wanna call Joe. Um, so with regard to the revolving funds, a couple of notes, you'll see in red, if you go to the far right, um Bryn. Um, there's a few that are in negatives as of twelve thirty. But um, the J H N revolving account, and that is the revolving account that holds the revenue from your rental at the Savage Center. But it, since um it has gotten some revenue in, that's kind of just the revenue didn't come in, and the expenditures, that kind of thing that's going on there. Um, and as of one six twenty-one, the balance was up to twenty-six thousand, so that one is okay right now. The ex- extended debt at twelve thirty-one was also a negative, but that has also um been moved to a positive amount. Um, that one, um, at that last time I looked was three thousand three thirty-nine. Um, but that could have been higher by now. She probably got some more revenue in. There's only one um that's a negative that we're still watching, and that's this high school donations, which um I am going to be watching that one to make sure that we get that one in a positive balance as well. All right, um, does anybody have any questions on this report before I move on to the circuit breaker? All right, so the next one is the circuit breaker. So if you go at the, um, we'll start at the very top, Bryn. So um, there's great news with the circuit breaker. Uh, per the Department of Ed report, the anticipated circuit breaker reimbursement is higher than we anticipated, um and with, it is going to be seventy-five percent as according to what they have on the Department of Ed um website right now. Uh, the total circuit breaker revenue expected for F Y twenty-one is two million four oh one four oh four. You'll see that in the budgeted column, okay? So if we use all, um, we've got in all our revenue, we started with our beginning balance of two million ninety-eight thousand um six ninety-one, and we applied all of our circuit breaker um budget that we anticipated. So we're gonna apply two million seven hundred and fifty against tuition, we're gonna apply five hundred thousand against tuition. If we went solely the way it's budgeted, then you would end up with an ended balance of one million two hundred and fifty um ninety-five. Okay, that's just the budgeted. So you'll see on the actual side, we've, at, as of um the twelve thirty-one, there was um one payment that has come in. Um, in January, there's another payment that just come in, so the next report will reflect that. Another thing to note is that beginning balance carryover has to be applied to tuition this year. You only have two years on your circuit breaker. So you receive your revenue in the first year, they give you one extra year to apply it. So we have to use at least two million ninety-eight um against that tuition. Um, you'll also see at the very bottom, if you go down to the bottom, Bryn. Um, I gave you, uh, I'm gonna keep a tally of your reimbursement history. So I pulled it out from F Y eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. So here you'll see your net claims, you'll see the number of students that um that were in the, the circuit breaker report, that you were able to get the revenue on. Shows you the percentage reimbursement rate through the years, the foundation per student. It also gives you um below that box, you'll see, um, I did a little bit of on what the special education reimbursement program is, and also the special indicator. and also the special indicators. The special indicators are students that fall into this category, we get a hundred percent reimbursement for them, less the foundation, rather than the seventy-five percent. So that category is any student that's abandoned, homeless, or a state ward. All right, so that would be your circuit breaker report. If we move on to, this is a new report that I added this month. I decided to show the out-of-district tuition actual to budget because that's such a large part of your budget, and it's really important to watch it to, not only as we're budgeting for next year, how we're checking on how we're going to be spending our circuit breaker. So as of the twelve thirty-one, it looked like you're under budget in your, by six, six hundred and forty thousand seven thirty-three. However, you have two additional students over what we're budgeted for. And that could be maybe a change in a placement or something like that. So it's, it's not unusual that you, you would see maybe less students in a savings or less students and it costs you more. It depends on the placement. And with regard to, to this, this particular area, the out-of-district tuition, is about eight percent of your total budget. So it is an area that we really want to watch. I do recommend establishing a special education stabilization fund in the near future. We'll probably talk about that further, maybe into the spring. But that is something that could help you with your special education. And then, any further questions on the out-of-district students? I would leave, leave that up to the Director of Pupil Services because she's, I'm more just a figures person. So that's all I'm going to report on is figures. If we move on to the next report, to assist in further educating and to help in analyzing the different sections of the budget, I decided to pull out some sections separately and just give you a little idea of them, just kind of look at them separately. So the one that is two sections that I chose for this quarter, and the first one is other school services. Other school services is other than instructional services. So that would include your nurses, your transportation, your food service, other than your revolving fund. Only expenditures for food service that are paid through the general fund. You've got your athletics and you've got your student activity. And this category is about seven percent of your budget currently. So I just thought it was nice to pull that out and so you can see a little bit on that separately, other than the general fund budget. One other thing to note on this, this area, when I report it to the Department of Ed, it does not report by school, it reports just as a lump sum, your total that you spent in your district. So I don't have to separate this out by the Willa and the Balch, different things like that. The next worksheet I did just for your reference, I kept in the Connolly Bus Contract for this year. I had already quoted this before that, but I thought I'd keep it in each quarter just so if you ever want to reference it, it's right there for you. And that lays out what we're going to, anticipating paying for the Connolly Bus Contract this year with the hybrid learning and the remote. And then finally, I pulled up facilities this quarter as well. One reason, because as we go to the district-wide facilities. So if you go to the bottom, you'll see that the facilities budget to be moved to the district-wide facilities is four million eight forty-one eighty-nine. There is a difference between that and what the total facilities budget is here. And that difference is the school equipment rep and rep should be staying with our budget because that's where the principals have the discretion to buy maybe some desks or some tables or something like that. So that section is staying with the school, the rest would be going to the shared facilities. And one thing to note on this is that it's nine percent of a budget of facilities. So nine percent of your budget, general fund budget, will be moving over to the town. What I talked to, this who we're attending about is I have started a finance folder in the Google Drive to try to, again, try to educate people, familiarize people more with budgeting, more with where we are in the process. So tomorrow I'll be adding this report to that Google Drive so that the administrators and the principals will see it each quarter. And then, you know, and if they have questions, they certainly could talk to me about it. Because I feel like the more they know about budgeting, the better it is for all of us because we're a team. And it helps me immensely if they understand the budget when we're doing the budget process. Today, the last thing we have is that we started, we decided to start a Google monthly question and answer for the finance department. So today was our first one. So it's an hour once a month where people can come on and they can ask me any questions. And then we also learn more about finance and budgeting. So that started today, and I thought it worked out fabulously. We'll see what everybody else thinks. But I thought it worked out great. I had some great questions. I did have one staff member, I did reach out and say if you'd like a one-on-one with me, you're certainly welcome to have that. So right after that meeting, I did have one that, that requested a one-on-one, so we did have that. So we're trying to move more towards educating, doing more of the Google Drive, which is new to me. So it's a learning curve for me and I'm starting to get up there right there. So that's my budget report today. If anybody has any questions, I'll gladly answer them.
Thank you, Karen. Mai.
So first, Karen, I just want to thank you for all of this information. I think that this is hugely helpful for us to see this on a quarterly basis. It's great for us to get it in advance like you provided it, so we really have a chance to, you know, dive in a little bit before the meeting. So I very much appreciate it. I think I just want to ask you kind of a big top-level question, you know. Are there any trends that you're seeing this year that are, that you are concerned about in terms of us, you know, finishing the budget in the black?
I'm, I'm, I'm not seeing that as of right now. I actually ran out of time, but I was going to do a column where I was going to pull out some areas that I thought you might have some savings. Because there was one in, for example, would be in the food service stipends. I think you might have some savings there due to the hybrid and remote learning model. So there was a little bit of money there. On the next quarterly report, I'm going to add that column and just add what I, my estimate is or what my guess is or you might have a little bit of savings in this particular area, might have a little bit of savings in this particular area. So as we go forward with the quarterly reports, I'd like to continue to add to them and to give you more and more information. I did also, in your notes, I gave you an appendix, I said. And an appendix, which is not for reporters, for your reference only. And that has the listing of the grants with their intended use and also the revolving funds, which what, what the revolving funds are for, their, their use and what the revenue that comes in. And that mostly not only for reference, but for new people coming in, they can see that.
Great, thank you.
Is there any other questions for Ms. Sheridan? Karen, I'll just back you on that. Thank you. You know, a big goal of the district that we've been talking about is not only with the budget development, but the budget management. And, you know, we have a number of goals embedded in the strategic plan that you are absolutely helping us achieve. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mai, do you want to give a brief update on the Budget Subcommittee and where we are in our work?
Sure. So the Budget Subcommittee met last Friday. You have in your packets the minutes from our December seventh meeting. Obviously, we don't yet have approved minutes from our meeting on last Friday. But the brief summary of what we did last Friday was we started to dive into this quarterly report that Ms. Sheridan had shared with us. We did have a little bit of a conversation about the Special Education Stabilization Fund, and Ms. Sheridan had done a fair amount of research on that. So I think that that was very important. And we started to talk a little bit about next steps in the FY twenty-two budget. I wanted to make everyone aware that the Townwide Budget Balancing Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, February second, at five thirty PM. So we'll kick off the Townwide Budget Balancing before town meeting starts. Because town meeting starts on a week from tomorrow. And then the other thing I wanted to make everyone aware of is that the, at the state level, the governor's budget came out today. And I have to say, this has been a little bit of an up and down day with regard to the budget because first came the, a letter from the governor that was posted on the state website. And that, and I thought, based on reading the letter, I thought things looked good. There, there is a plan to increase the unrestricted general government assistance to match the percentage increase in the consent revenue, so that was going to go up about three and a half percent. And there was, talk about commitment to the Student Opportunities Act and continuing to fund that. And so I thought that that all sounded really good and maybe was good news for our district. However, later in the day, the cherry sheets came out. And so the cherry sheet includes the numbers for, by each community that the governor is recommending, including our Chapter Seventy money and other education reimbursements and unrestricted general government aid, and then also the charges, the assessments that are charged to the town. So that's where things didn't look as good as I had hoped that they would. It is in fact true that unrestricted general government aid is up a little bit, up about a hundred and forty thousand dollars from last year. That, this is, of course, the governor's recommendation, and then the House will come up with their recommendation, and the Senate will come up with their recommendation. And then there'll be a conference committee and the budget will probably be decided in August or something like that, and it starts July one. But, but the, the governor's budget is generally very helpful because it gives us kind of a floor. In, historically, once the governor puts out his budget, those numbers don't go down. Last year was a little bit different because of the COVID pandemic, but in general, I think everyone believes that this is the floor. So general government aid went up about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, which isn't, you know, going to be a huge windfall for the town, but is better, we had thought it might just stay flat, so that was good. What isn't so great is that our Chapter Seventy money is predicted to go up just over a hundred thousand dollars. And in fact, our charter's tuition reimbursement is predicted to go down a little bit. So the net educational money that's coming from the state is now up only ninety-five thousand dollars. And that's really quite a bit lower than we had hoped for. I mean, in our general, our education aid is like twice what our UGGA aid is. So you would hope that it would at least, so it's going up at a much lower percentage than the UGGA. And I think that, I don't know for sure, but I, I believe that this may be related to our student census. That when you go back and look at our October one numbers, enrollment numbers, they were down about a hundred students from the year before. So with our enrollment going down, that means our reimbursements go up, I mean, also go down. They never, the state has like a home hold harmless plan so that your Chapter Seventy money never goes down. But because our, I think because our enrollments have gone down, our, our Chapter Seventy isn't going up at the percentage that we would have hoped. And then the state did this nifty trick where they're, they raised the charges for us too. Now, as a town, so the town charges are up by almost a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. So all net told, if you look at all the state recommendations, the governor's recommendations for state revenue to the town and assessments or charges back to the state, the, the town is up about a hundred thousand dollars from last year. Which, you know, compared to, we're, we bring in about fifteen million dollars in state aid, a hundred thousand dollar increase is a very small number. So that's disappointing. And I'm also concerned because I've had some conversations with people about some of the shared expenses and Blue Hills tuitions are up significantly. We've had a significant increase in enrollment in Norwood students in, at Blue Hills. And also their tuitions are going up because of their building project. So we're looking at a larger assessment there. And preliminary estimates for the GIC, the health insurance number, are around five percent. That's always hard to judge exactly what that's going to be. We'll, we'll get more clarity on that in the next month or so. But I was so excited when I read the governor's letter and much less so now. But that's where we're at.
Mai, I thank you for taking time today because I know it came out like late afternoon for reviewing this for us and providing us this update. Are there any questions based off of what Mai have shared? The roller coaster ride has begun, again. Actually, we've never gotten off of it. We're just going down the next loop. Dave, did you have a question?
I was going to say, can we take just a five-minute recess? My phone's about to die. I have to get a different charger as well. So.
Sure. Is there a second on that motion to take a brief break? Joe, all in favor? Just five minutes because we have a lot more to do.
Yes, of course.
Okay, we'll be back. Welcome back to the School Committee meeting on Wednesday, January twenty-seventh, resuming with our very full agenda tonight. I am going to ask the committee to make one minor adjustment to the order and pull policy forward to respect the time of Ms. Semino, since it is getting late. So Ms. Semino was here to talk to us tonight about what would be a new policy for the district. So if we do decide to vote on it tonight, as a reminder, it will require a public comment period and then a second vote at the next meeting. But Laurie, would you like to guide us through this policy?
Sure. Good evening. I'm going to just put up on my screen. So this policy is IHBAA, and it is Observation and Programming in two thousand and nine. Am I showing my screen?
I don't see it yet.
There you go.
Yes.
Okay, now I can see it.
So in two thousand and nine, legislation came out regarding parents' rights to observe proposed or potential placements for students in special education programming. And I'm just asking school committee to update our policies to have a policy that supports the guidelines around the observation of special ed programming. So we have set out sort of what the guidelines around an observation would be here within the policy. So this is the actual policy. And then shared within your packets is sort of the process and procedures of how we actually implement it and what would be shared with parents and/or their evaluators or advocates, whomever it would be that would be coming to do the actual observation at the time of coming to do the observation. So we are just requesting that this be part of school committee policy moving forward and part of our practice moving forward. So I know you all have had a chance to read it. It aligns with the MASC outlines. I, I know we're beginning that process of review. So Chairwoman was helpful enough to get us a head start of looking at what the MASC policy would be.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Semino. So just as Laurie mentioned, this is a policy from two thousand and nine. So the MASC put it out in oh nine. The district should have adopted it in oh nine, but did not. Dave?
Assuming this is suspended during COVID situation?
So it is not suspended during COVID situation. There are some, obviously restrictions that we would put on that during the COVID time. Shorter periods of time, we would ask that they respect all of our safety regulations, you know, remaining six feet apart, wearing masks, all of that. This is actually a question that has come quite a bit in our monthly meetings with Associate Commissioner Russell Johnson. We obviously would offer parents, a remote observation would be
We obviously would offer parents, a remote observation would be our preferred method and would be the first thing that we would ask parents to participate in setting up a remote observation. And we have had parents willingly participate in that. Of course, if a parent, you know, demanded their rights to be able to do it in person, we would, we would oblige and set that up with safety measures. Typically, what we're doing is setting up a visit on Wednesday so that they can see the facility, get to see the layout of the school and all of that when students are not in person. And then do a shorter observation for when students are present.
Are there other questions? Is there a motion for the first approval and vote of this policy?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? I think everybody just seconded that once, but Emery, I saw your hand first, for other discussion. All in favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Five zero, great. So Dr. Thompson, if you could ask Priscilla to get it on the website tomorrow. We can have the two week public comment period and then we will add this to the agenda again on February tenth. Great, thank you, everyone. Thank you. So just a really quick policy update. Today, Joan and I met with Glenn Kutcher from the MASC. He will be the official MASC rep working with us. He's the Executive Director of MASC, so we will be able to utilize his expertise in this process. We do have another meeting set up with him for February eighteenth. And then we do have a policy subcommittee meeting set up next week, February third, with Joan and I, Dr. Thompson and Laurie, to look at some other policies in the interim. Okay, so circling back on our agenda under Old Business, the Joint Facilities MOU update, we're actually gonna move to the next meeting, because it's not quite yet ready for our review tonight. Do you want to give brief updates on the middle school project and also the school start times task force? But I wanted to check with the committee. It is getting late, we do have to go back into executive session, we did not finish that discussion. So Dr. Thompson and the committee, what is your preference on the discussion around the Superintendent Goals Benchmark Report? Do you want to power through and have that tonight, or do you want to move that to our next meeting?
I'll motion to retable that to the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm okay moving to the next meeting.
Is there a second on that motion? Joan?
What's that? That wasn't my dog.
It came off at the wrong time.
That was perfect timing.
So all in favor of moving the Superintendent Benchmark Report on his goals to the next meeting?
Aight.
Aight, there, okay, we'll move that. So then to just quickly update you on the middle school project. I think the biggest thing to know is that the Educational Plan Draft will be coming to the school committee on February fourth. And please, please review that, look that over, because we will be talking about it on February tenth for the initial conversation of gathering school committee feedback, so that Dr. Thompson and Dr. Frazek can continue their work on it before we really dive into it on February twenty fourth. But Dr. Thompson, did you want to provide any other update on the middle school project right now?
No, we are, we are doing well with that. Actually, we're, we're a little ahead of schedule. It's been a lot of work. Dana Brown, who's, who's with us, who's our interim project manager, and he's worked closely with Margot in getting the material into that, he's done a lot of research. It's actually been a great way for him to greet everybody and meet everybody around the district, because I think you've met just about everybody. But, you know, we're very glad that Dana has brought his experience and his assistance to this, because it is a big project on top of all the other very big projects and this little pandemic thing going on. But huge help without, without him, I think we'd probably be a week or two behind, but we're actually ahead. So thank you to him and Margot has done the bulk of, of the first blush of the, of the writing of this. You know, we didn't want her to get too far away from her dissertation work, so we decided we'd give her this. But she also deserves a lot of kudos to her and also Mr. Freeman and Mr. Greeley, who've been picking up for her a little bit around the middle school, so she can concentrate on that. We're in a good spot, there definitely are gonna need to be some decisions and conversations around that, that is this next process. Everything that's in there does align with our strategic plan. It's just whether that's exactly where we're going to go or not, so we need to take a good look at that. So appreciate your, your help with that. It is going to be about sixty pages, so I would definitely set aside some time and we do need you to really read on it and give us some good feedback on that. So, thank you.
Any questions at this time about the ed plan or the middle school project? Okay, we will continue to keep you posted. So moving on to the school start times task force, I just want to provide a brief update to the committee. The task force did meet yesterday and in the packet, you do have the minutes from that meeting already. And a link to an additional folder that was created after the last school committee meeting with materials that the task force is working on. As the school committee requested of the task force, the task force is looking into additional community outreach and surveys based off of the specific proposal that was presented at the last meeting. We meet again as the task force next Friday, February fifth, to finalize the survey questions and the steps for outreach. And we do hope that the surveys can go out to the community the week before February break. But any questions or feedback on the material that is in the packet on school start times? Okay, so we covered policy, we do not have any new business tonight, thank goodness. But moving along to consent agenda, Dr. Thompson, we have a few donations.
Yes, the first one is from the Norwood Rotary Club. They dropped off eleven boxes of fifty medical grade face masks to the schools. We've distributed, or will be distributing them to all the schools. Our Bay State Textiles rebate of three hundred and forty nine dollars. And then the BACH Fund made a donation to extend a day to the tune of two thousand dollars.
Thank you. And just a brief mention on that last one, the donation to extended day. I just wanted to give a kudos to Chris Capizio, because she actually had to apply for that. So although we appreciate the donation, she did take the initiative and is taking the initiative to seek funding for the Remote Learning Support Program that the district is running. But is there a motion to accept these donations?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Dave. Joan, were you seconding it?
Yes, I was.
Perfect. All in favor?
Aight.
Five zero, great. So School Committee Addenda, Joan, did you have anything this evening?
I do not have an addenda this evening.
Emery?
I'm not this evening.
Dave?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Maya?
I just wanted to take an opportunity to express my condolences to the family of Bernie Cooper. I was very saddened to hear of his passing this weekend and his death is a great loss to Norwood.
I agree, Maya, and thank you for mentioning that. I should have mentioned that at the beginning of the meeting, but I was focused on the agenda. So I'll, I'll, I'll keep my comments brief, but just after our whole meeting tonight, I was just thinking a little bit more about everything that public schools really truly do for our society and the extremely high standards and expectations on a school system to fix and solve and provide for society. You know, when this pandemic first happened in March, everybody was very appreciative of teachers. And somehow, somewhere along the way, that appreciation has seemed to wean, not just in Norwood, but across the country. And I would just encourage the community to, yes, be frustrated, we're all frustrated, but to still show some appreciation and respect and compassion for those in public education and for our district. And just tonight's meeting alone, I think is so evident of everything that our school system does for our town. You heard from Al Bishop of everything the Transportation Department has been doing, delivering thirty thousand meals, helping when our hospital was flooded, really stepping up. I know Eli Norris in the Food Department, you know, never badder than I. What can I do? How can I help? How can I feed families, not just children, but families? You know, our partnership with the Health Department, our nurses really taking on roles that school nurses should not be asked to do right now. They, they, they shouldn't, you know, public health, and this is no criticism of Segal, but public health should be better funded instead of asking your school nurses to do these things. The collaboration with Aubrey and our commitment to mental health of our students and staff, that's not helping, that's not happening in other districts. Our commitment as a school committee to run our extended day program, to expand the extended day program, to meet that childcare need as best as we can. There's just so many things I'm so proud of that Norwood has done. And I would just ask the community to not lose sight of that. And maybe it's time we have another parade. I don't know, that was really fun in March last year. I don't like the cold, but if somebody wants to organize the parade, I'll, I'll be out there in my mask cheering on our educators. So. On that note, we do unfortunately have to go back into executive session to finish contact contract negotiations. So I need a motion to go into executive session, we will only return for the point of adjournment. Fair motion? Thank you, Emery. Is there a second? Thank you, Maya. I do need to poll individually, so Maya?
Yes.
Thank you, Dave.
Yes.
Thank you. Joan?
Yes.
Thank you, Emery. Also, yes, so we will enter executive session and to the rest of the community, we will see you again on February tenth. Thank you.